Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And we'll move out to item number three, public comments. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? There are no public comment, we will move on to item number four, which is presentation of citation from the state of Connecticut to Mr. and Mrs. Thomas Backlich from State Representative Nicole Claris Dietrich. Madam State Representative, the floor is yours. You maybe take the mic, so. No, just so they can hear you on the video. By my mother. Just spin Trish's around.
Hello, alright, now we're.
Oh, and then we're off.
Alright, now we're working. Alright, to Mr. and Mrs. Backlich, all the work that you've done over the last fifteen-plus years for raising Toys for Kids, we, we at the state of Connecticut and the town of Seymour wanted to thank you and just show you a little bit of appreciation and gratitude that you've done for us and these kids for over the years. So here's your official citation from the state of Connecticut, the General Assembly, from myself, Senator Eric Bertel, and Senator Kevin Kelly. In recognition of the time-honored holiday tradition you created over fifteen years ago to bring to the town of Seymour together to spread charitable giving and goodwill during this festive season. Your mission has helped to inspire the hearts of our community to give back and help create a delightful holiday filled with wonderment and joy for countless children in need. On behalf of the entire community, the delegation wishes you many years of continued success and prosperity to carry out this joyful operation of kindness. The entire membership extends its best, very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Come on up.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, we'll move on to item number five, which is approval in the minutes from the December fourth special meeting. Do I have a motion to do so? Motion by Ann Marie. Second by Rob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Stained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero two. And please note Bob and Trish's abstentions. Item number six, Strategic Planning Committee. As we all know, the Strategic Planning Committee, well, I'm required to present to them twice a year, and they are required to present to us once a year. At our last meeting, we received some information to review, which is the updates to the strategic plan and then also a one-year set of short-term goals that they're going to go through. So we have Rory, Kathy, Stefan, and Don here from the committee. So who's going to present, Kath? Okay, so I will turn the floor over to you. And while you're doing that, I'm gonna run upstairs and get something in my office.
Well, good evening, everyone. I've met most of you, but for those of you that I've not met before, my name is Kathy Verlich. I am the Chair of the Tenure Strategic Planning Committee. And we do have a really excellent PowerPoint presentation. However, you may have to get it in hard copy after the fact. That's okay. So I'm gonna start off by giving a little bit of history of the strategic plan. And for those of you who haven't heard this dog and pony before, our first meeting was in November of 2013. So we've been at this for a while. In the early days, we were tasked around collecting data. We essentially interviewed all of the departments, all the boards, everybody we could think of, and gathered data around what the current state of our community was. We delivered the first early days version of the plan in March of 2014. And since then, we've been gathering data, we've been refining the data, we've been putting it into forms that we can work with, and making changes, and also taking things off the list. We've had several areas of success over the past few years. You know, CAFRA awards and things of that nature. I don't wanna take a lot of time going into them. They're all a matter of record. But I wanna talk about where we're going from here. We spent 2019 really doing some cleanup, looking at the document as a whole, saying, okay, what's outdated, what's been completed, what do we need to think about next? And we've been planning for the future. And this, that's where we're gonna talk about today. So we kind of had what I refer to as a lightbulb moment. And I wanna thank Mr. Finley for that. He came to one of our meetings and we talked about the plan and really brought to our minds what a powerful item, what a powerful piece of literature this document really is. And that, along with that power, there were risks. And there were things that we really had to think hard about if we wanted the strategic plan to be what we envisioned it to be, which is the blueprint that we use to keep our town moving forward. We had a risk of becoming stagnant. So we got a document. So what? Who cares? It's a piece of paper, doesn't mean anything. We have lots of pieces of paper. So we, we, we thought about it, we took it to heart, and we said, okay, what have we, what have we been doing? Well, what we've been doing is we created a list of deliverables and built goals. And what we should've been doing was building, was creating goals and building deliverables. So that's where we are now. So some of you are probably familiar with something called Agile. The term being agile means to be nimble and to be moved quickly and decisively and to, you know, be like a gazelle. Alright, Agile has another meaning. In business, particularly in software development, Agile is a system, it's a project management process. And there's very elaborate definitions of what it is, and there's all kinds of players. There's scrum masters like Stefan, who are these, you know, puppet masters who keep things moving. And then there's people like me who are what they call hitmen, who come in and they jump in on a task, they get it done, and they move out. Okay? But what it means really is taking a big project and breaking it down into little manageable chunks, assigning those chunks to different teams, and everybody's moving forward to the same goal. So that's what we're gonna be doing with our strategic plan, starting in 2020. So, how did we figure out what we were gonna do? Well, we went through a process where we took all the goals based on all the data that we'd come up with over the course of the last five years. And we sorted them into three categories, A, B, or C. An A category is something we know everything about, we know that there's resources available, and we feel like we can get it done in a year. Okay? So those were all given As. We took another category, Bs, which were things we maybe, we, we didn't know enough about. We feel like they probably could be done in a year, but we're not so sure. And then there were our C category, which were, we didn't know enough about it really, didn't know the resources, or it was gonna take way more than a year to get it done. Okay? So we, we took all the As and we put them into a list. And that list is what you have in front of you. So, the one-year list, those are all of our As, all of our Ones. We can define it completely. We know the resources are in place, we're reasonably sure those resources are in place. They can be completed by a single team. Maybe they'll have to collaborate with another team, but probably not. There shouldn't be anything that, what we call a contingent item, which is, I can't do this until they do that. There's none of that. They can be measured, and they can be reported, which is really important. So we can know that they've been done. So, we're setting a timeline behind this. We wanna finalize that list and get it out to the team, the teams, and they're, they're itemized on that which team we envision would be able to complete these tasks by next month. We want to give everybody the better part of a year to complete these tasks. And you'll notice that none of them are really difficult. Most of them are, for the most part, what we call fairly low-hanging fruit. What we're trying to do is get people into the mindset of breaking larger goals into smaller chunks and banging away at them. We'd like to distribute this list to the team by the end of January. We're gonna keep track on how tasks are being completed through our updates with Kurt. And if we feel like we need to, you know, zoom in and see, okay, well, what's really going on with this? Or what, that barriers are in your way, we can do that. And we're gonna deliver a report of these activities the end of the year, the end of 2020. So we're gonna put together a report that says, these are all of the items that we set out to be completed, and here's the status on every single one of them. And at that time, we're gonna turn around and say, okay, here's what we're gonna do in 2021. So, we may find, as we go through these items, that there's other elements, or there's other aspects that need to be explored. Those will go into the pot and we'll look at them and say, okay, is that a 2021 thing? Or is that something we may not be able to look at right away? But we feel pretty confident that we're gonna be able to get most of those things on that list completed, that they're very doable. So, now the other aha moment we had was that there was one group of people that we really didn't press very hard for information. And that was you guys. You know, you were all elected because you have a vision. You have a vision for what this town is and what it can be. So, we would like to start tapping into your vision a little bit. And you'll notice that, I think Rory also gave you something we call the Vision Worksheet. And it's very simple, and if we need to figure out some way to sit down with you and workshop it with you, we can do that. But I'd like to quickly take you through it and ask that you give us some feedback based on your vision for this community. So I use New York City as an example, and the one that would be on my fantabulous PowerPoint presentation. So I asked myself, well, what do I like about New York City? It's exciting, there's a lot of shopping, there's lots of things to do, lots of entertainment. I like theater. What do I not so much like about New York City? Well, Times Square's got a lot of paper. It's dirty, there's stuff all over the place. There's no parking near the shopping, so you gotta take a cab or a train. And it can be hard to find those theaters. Okay? So, what does that mean? Well, I would like New York City to be clean, have ample parking, and to be well-signed, well-signed posted. Okay, this is just an example. So what we're gonna ask you to do, and there's an example on your worksheet, you know, so you don't have to remember everything I'm telling you, is to think about what you would like the town to be. And be specific, not, I want it to be family-friendly. Well, what does that mean? Okay? What it means is maybe, I want there to be park, be parks in every so many square miles so that kids have someplace to go. And I'm making it up. Okay? And so now what we're gonna do is, once we gather all this information from you, is we're gonna take that and go, well, who do we talk to about that? Alright, well, if I go back to my New York City, you know, reference, if Times Square has got a lot of stuff all over the ground, well, I'm gonna talk to Public Works and say, we need to change the street sweeping schedule. We've taken a goal, and we've made it into an action item, something tangible that we can do. Okay? So, I put some instructions on that action, you know, on that vision sheet. If you have any questions, you can always, you know, get Rory or get me, or, you know, whatever you need to do. But really think about it, think about why you were elected. What is your vision? Because we'd like to start working on bringing that to life. And that's how we do this, is through the strategic plan. And that's it. I thank you for your time. I promise that Rory will send you my PowerPoint presentation. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Right, I have one question, Kath, just on the reporting aspect of it. So if it's, let's say, community services, fire service, so on and so forth, is the expectation that that, those updates will be provided in the quarterly reports to my office, who in turn will report that back to you guys twice a year?
I think that would be the easiest way to do it, yes. And eventually to, you know, something we spoke of, we would love to have a dashboard, you know, where we can show that. Building the website out is actually one of the to-dos on our task. You know, once, you know, depending on when the timing of that is.
Next item on the agenda, literally.
Awesome. But then, you know, once we do that, now we'll have a way that we can update in real time, or at least, you know, in real time as possible.
Is there a potential that for the, that twice-a-year meeting, you'd wanna see any of these folks?
I think if they feel like they need clarity. We've tried to make the items simple enough that they should understand, you know, what we're looking for. But, you know, we would always be willing to, you know, entertain them at our meeting or, you know, come in and speak to them if we need to. We'll play that bit by ear. This is a new, you know, this is a new approach for this sort of, you know, municipal. I mean, we've done it with software development, but it, you kind of have to spend a little bit of time to feel it out and see how, you know, how it's gonna work with the masses. But, I mean, that's definitely something we can be in communication about.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, even if it's not through the quarterly report, I, I mean, maybe even just a written summary?
Yeah.
From the stakeholders that I can at least bring and present to the board as part of my?
That would be perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll work on that.
With bullets, yeah. And, you know, we also wanna encourage folks that if they knock it out of the park really early, be an overachiever. There's absolutely nothing wrong with it. If you, if your goal here is to, you know, build a website, okay, that's all we've asked of you. But there isn't any reason that somebody building a website might go, well, I wanna put that dashboard up. You know, so we do intend to, where it makes sense, continue to move the bar out.
Now, are you gonna use the Agile process to do it? Where you're gonna do sprints and do it somewhat similar to that? 'Cause then you could put in the backlog, and then you could have those items available.
Yeah. We have to see how, you know, again, this is gonna be new thinking for a lot of people. And we expect there's gonna be a little bit of a learning curve. But yeah, I mean, Stefan is a, is a scrum master extraordinaire.
Yeah, 'cause you can use the Agile process as the tool, that's a very good way to do it.
Yeah. It, it seems really complicated when you look at the definitions, but once you actually start working on it, it's, it's literally just taking a big thing, breaking it down into manageable chunks, and then moving on to the next. So.
I, I like this much better.
Yes, fantastic. That's great, much better.
I'm gonna take it, bring it to life.
These tasks that you are looking to delegate and break up into pieces, will you be using any kind of software, some scoreboard or some CRM software to manage this and have a very clear set of, this is for this, this is for that, that people can look back on?
So, that was the dashboard we were, we were referencing. Right now, there's, there's no software within the town that we can use, but, and we, Stefan and I both have access to stuff, you know, through work that we can try to, you know, a smart chart or something that we can pull in. But worst case, good old Excel.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
I'm just gonna comment that I'm super excited that you've taken this over. This is, many people know, was way back my baby, and I am, I mean, you are the right person leading them now, and I am really excited that you're bringing it to the next step. I'm excited for you to get more involved. I don't have the knowledge at this level to take it to where I've always envisioned it being to make it happen, but this is really exciting and fantastic.
I had a great start, just needs to take that next step.
Yeah, you have to, it's gotta happen in, in stages. Without the data, we had no, you have no idea what you're gonna do. So now we've got all this stuff, and now it's like, what do we do with it? How do we make it sing?
I think this is really a true reflection of how, over time, and baby steps, you can really get to where you need to go. Because in the beginning, we didn't know where it was gonna land, how we were going to accomplish things. And we were really trying to change the atmosphere and, kind of, business as usual from being reactive to proactive. And I completely see that starting to happen now. And just pushing that forward is a real success for the town.
You have to start where it finished, so having that start and getting to where you guys are now, fantastic. And even now this, it's perfect.
But we're gonna be looking to you guys so we don't run out of goals. The hope is that people are going to start to, to just charge through these and knock them off the list. So now we can, we just keep putting more things, and maybe in 21, we have things that are more complex. We have processes that are more involved, or tasks that have a little more meat on the bones that, you know, they need to work through. That now we have, we go into really hardcore sprints, and now we take this big thing and break it down and move it to different teams. Absolutely. And we're gonna take a whole year to do it. And sort of our goal is, at the end of the year, to be able to show, to come back here and for me to stand here again and to say, look at all this stuff that the team did. Alright, guys, thanks a lot.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, so your vision sheets. We can have those back at our next meeting on January seventh. Rory will make sure that we get those to Kathy. Everybody could fill those out. Fantastic. Yeah, Kathy, you're the puppet master in the back. We have a little, we have a little, yeah, hitman, public man. Don, do you have, do you have a nickname of some kind, Don? No?
Do you want one? Do you want one?
Yeah, I would like for the next meeting, if you can have a nickname for a Don as well, please.
I could come up with a few.
Yeah. Alright, item number seven, which is our website proposal. Doesn't really, Rob is here, so Rory. Oh, yeah. You're the winner.
Hello.
Do you want this to look up?
Yeah, that'd be good. So, we last touched our website in 2012, at which point we were operating with FrontPage 2001. So, you know, improvement, but we're overdue. We, we first actually started looking at upgrading right around the time that we were expecting huge budget cuts from the state. So we, we asked them, our vendor, to wait. And they did. And then they continued to wait, and continued to wait, and continued to wait. And now they're decommissioning the server that our website is on. So now they're ready to move. And, so we're gonna move. So, we had actually budgeted, what, ten thousand, twenty thousand in the capital plan to do an upgrade. If you had a chance to review, it comes in at under five.
It said four payments, yet then it showed two payments of twenty-four hundred.
Yeah, it's two.
Two, again, twenty-four hundred.
It is two. That was the one issue that Rob and I took with the proposal, and he was supposed to have changed that. So, basically, they, they upgraded the entire CMS on the backend. When we did our website in 2012, websites were still very text-heavy. They are not anymore. The new CMS is very media-focused. There is a variety of new tools that will be available to us. Rob has reviewed it, we, he was on a conference call, they did a demonstration for us. He reviewed the proposal. The only issue, as well, was the funding error that they've assured us. It is two payments, so forty-eight hundred total. And we're hoping to get started, as, as is the vendor, since they're decommissioning our server as soon as possible, so.
Great, just going into this, I'm assuming you've interacted with them, we're happy with this vendor? Not that I have any reason to think otherwise, but.
Yeah. They've been, you know, again, the websites have come a long way since 2012, when we first... Our website is on their server. The new one will be Amazon Web Services-based, so we've had some issues with downtime on the current website, which, you know, every time we talk to them, they say, yeah, we're already on it, it'll be back up within two hours. You know, whatever it is, we expect a lot less downtime on the new one.
Okay. The, the vendor is EvoGov?
Correct.
Okay, they work with municipalities?
Yeah, yep. They, so they were known as Delaware.net, and they kinda specialized doing government websites. So they're doing business as EvoGov.
Okay, not that I don't like that price, 'cause just from my own business getting, it's, it's, it is pricey. But did we do any shopping of any other vendors, anything like that? Any other quotes?
We did not. When we, the last time we did our website, we had all of our data internally in FrontPage. Now, you know, we own the content, but it's on their server. So just, you know, the cost of migrating, every minute, agenda, everything, is already there.
Yeah.
You know, we're comfortable with them. We worked with them to, you know, design the, the old one from scratch. You know, we're confident that this is gonna be good. Their, their new websites look fantastic. So we did not.
Okay. When, and this one should last five years?
I think we need to not wait until, you know, the platform is, is being phased out for next one. So we can, we should probably talk with Rob.
We're gonna wanna think about periodic type updates.
Yeah. Yeah, and again, in their defense, they, they tried in probably 2017, when it was five years.
Is there any kind of uptime guarantee in our contract? In other words, three nines, is that, is that specified in our contract with EvoGov?
Oh, in the current contract?
In the one that we're planning?
Right now, we don't have the contract with them, for the new website. When we do get one, it'll go through Rich, and I know, I think it was Vision. I remember you had a question about their uptime. And, and Rob was right on top of that. We're gonna make sure Rob reviews the contract when we get one.
And when we set this up in 2012, we didn't have Rob. So now we have Rob.
Yeah, but the last website was put together by committee, which I, which I think shows.
But we have, we have Joe as well, though. Alright, what else?
So is this gonna be just for the town, or like our, our fire departments, or ambulance committee, or police department, if they have access, would all be linked into theirs? So if you wanna put on a police department, it'll bring us to the police department.
Yeah, so, so the current way we have it done, if there is a website, some of those don't have their own, if they have their own external website, if you, you know, go to our town departments and you click on that, like Seymour Public Library brings you to the library's website. Some of them will continue to be external, the library, for example. Some of them will continue to be external. The library, for example, their website is tied into their card catalog software, so it will remain external. But for example, the police department's website, they ceased to have an external website and now have an internal page. I know we talked about the EDC. They had their own website. They had no professional staff updating it. So occasionally the information would become out of date and some of the businesses would be upset. So in working with the chair of EDC and the board, we decided that we would take that in to the town webpage. So it'll be a mix dependent.
And we'll still be able to pay our taxes online?
Oh, all that functionality.
Yeah, correct. That's an external website. That's a link to it.
All that functionality. I'll hold my breath.
So who will go through the wireframes and the charts? Will that just be Rob and he'll make the decision? Is that how it will work? Or will that be presented?
For content?
Or the wireframes and, yeah, flowchart?
I would not expect any of the minutia will come back to this board. It'll be addressed by Rob, Joe, Rory.
Yeah, we, you know, if you guys would like, you know, when we have, they, you know, have working sites before they go live, you know, we can bring them to you to kind of preview it before it goes live, if you have any, you know, recommendations or anything like that.
Wait, I was just asking if there's a team or somebody that's looking at that?
On the town side?
Yeah.
I'm sure most of it will be Malia, Rob and I working to get all the content together.
And Joe. Who'll give you another job? Anyone else?
We're going to be adequately ready for the rollout of it. I'm just looking at some of the additional functions that are, I think are fantastic. I just want to make sure that the different departments and employees are prepared for the new functionalities, like the 3-1-1 system and.
So, you know, for example, our current website has an Intranet that we do not use. Just because the functionality exists doesn't mean that we have to roll it out right away. We're going to be focused on getting, hitting the.
Facing the public sees?
Yeah.
The external piece.
Up and running because we're on a tight timeline with the server being decommissioned now. We don't really have a choice. We have to get it live. I don't know what the drop dead date is. If it's, you know, December 31st, we have plenty of time. If it's somewhere in the middle of the year, it'll be a little tighter.
I wouldn't be opposed to a phased rollout, but I hope we're going to take advantage of all of the new abilities it's going to give the town and increased communications. And just figure out, I mean, I think we do need to plan and figure out a way to make sure that it's going to be successful externally and internally. But I would like to see us take advantage of what we can offer.
You know, as Joe mentioned, like the way the current site works on the backend, we could create usernames for everybody. They could log in, maintain their own pages. We didn't take advantage of that going forward, we're going to. Because one of the problems that we have is, because the backend is pretty user-friendly. It's essentially, you know, Microsoft Word. It'll be a little more complicated now because it's more media-centric, but the content of our pages stops being current because the current process is someone emails me and I update it. And they only know it's out of date when somebody in the public calls them and, you know. So there, there's definitely going to need to be training and a change in process internally. And that's going to be challenging with some of the users. We will find out. And, you know, we'll, currently, Malia and I, and, you know, Joe does the emergency services page, so. And, you know, the HR director does the job postings now. So a handful of us are doing all of this right now. If there are, you know, people who are not capable, you know, we'll work with them. But the idea is to turn, and it, it's not, it won't go live. Anything that they will try to publish will be approved before it goes out of the kind of field, so there's some control on it as well.
But does that mean the other items that they're offering is going to be kind of like a phased rollout once we figure out how we can feasibly manage?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
As long, as long as we think it's worthwhile, you know. If we don't think it brings, you know, I think they may have their own internal email system. We already have a functioning email system, but we don't need to.
What else, anything?
Seems like it's going to be a vast improvement over what we had 10, 15 years ago, which was awful. And we have what we have now currently, which is pretty decent, but looking forward to having this as the next step in keeping us moving forward.
Yeah, unfortunately, we learned some lessons, you know. The idea with the last one was, let's put all the information out there. And the lesson we learned was, that's too much information. There's too many buttons. The front page has too much going on. It's distracting, so.
In terms of support, I see that there's items here for training and maintenance, if you will. In terms of requesting support or help to us support from them, how would that work? Who would be able to call? Would that be charged, et cetera?
It depends on the type of support. So based on how it's working with the current site, there have been one or two times where we wanted to, I cannot code, I cannot do anything like that. So, for example, when, when we create a new page, I take one of the existing templates. I literally copy and paste it and then I just change the content. If we wanted to pay them to do that, we could do that, you know. They could create a page for us. There have been a few instances where we needed an additional button added. They charged us for those services. In terms of general maintenance, if the website is down, if there's, you know, something that's not functioning through anything other than user error, we're not charged for that, you know. It's considered part of the maintenance contract.
Are there plans, if we do start rolling this out, to get everybody in a room to basically either do a webcast or in-person training to get everybody up to speed on this? Are we going to try and knock everybody out in one shot?
Everybody, the staff?
Everybody on the staff or whoever's in a, whoever's in a management position to make updates. And would that be charged extra?
Yeah.
I know it's charged for the training, but.
Yeah, so with how they did it last time, they trained a few of us at once. And I believe it was done webcast. They were based out of Delaware then. I think they're based out of Colorado now. So I don't, I don't think they're going to fly anybody out to us. You know, one of the issues we run into in town hall with departments of two is, you know, somebody's got to stay in the office. Somebody's got to, so, you know, we can have them do it at their computer, but ultimately, if a resident comes in to the assessor's office and there's one person in the assessor's office and they're trying to do this webcast, you know. So we'll, we'll have to figure it out because I imagine the way it will work is, you know, one person in each department will be tasked with maintaining that webpage. So we'll work to get them all trained. The bulk of it, you know, of the website is not department page. That's a handful of them. You know, the rest I assume will continue to be maintained mostly by our office.
Is there any kind of tie-in with external social? I know that's a problem with the Economic Development Commission right now, but is there any kind of plan to tie in the website with, say, Facebook?
You know, I know on our current website, there's the, you know, the Facebook feed for the first selectmen's page shows up right on the front. I think it's kind of a blank canvas and if that's what we want, you know, that's the kind of input.
I'm thinking about, in my mind, I'm thinking like an API where if we put something up here, it shoots out to Facebook, Twitter, et cetera, whatever we use.
I'm sure they could accommodate it, you know, if that's what we want to do.
You're on there committing that.
Yeah, congratulations.
I'll remember that in the future. Thank you. Good, anything else? Excellent. Thank you Rory. Well done. Alright, item number eight, discussion, take possible action on next-gen software agreements. As part of the $1.4 million bond issue, one of the pieces of that was the next-gen system at the police department. The reason this is before us now is we would like to purchase this in advance or at least start the process. There'll be a discount available if we do this before December 31st. We have Tom and Joe and Claire, are you here for this too? Clay's here on his own. So Tom and Joe are here. They can talk specifically about this. But again, this is something that's already been approved by the residents. It's just a matter of, we will need to purchase this or a portion of this in advance, about $80,000, which would come out of the general fund. It would essentially be an IOU until the bond funds come in. We met with the financial advisors today. We expect that to be probably the third or fourth week in March is when the money would come in. But Tom or Joe, I don't know who's going to speak.
Good evening, everyone. Tom Amy, 50 Laurel Lane, Chairman of Communications Commission. It's part of this package that we all talked about. One of the things was the CAD system, which is a computer-aided dispatch. And the PD was well overdue for a replacement. We had done internally research and we've looked at next-gen. State of Connecticut utilizes next-gen along with about 150 other municipalities. So well endowed and well working. The first round was Rob Dyer, myself and Detective Matusovich. We went out there, spent about five hours with the vendor. Went through a whole bunch of templates, looked at everything, talked information technology, listened to Rob and Joe really take off on their expertise. Bottom line, we all came out there feeling very positive. It was a good move for this community and for the police department. Second round of folks, Chief Zakowski, the two deputy chiefs, and Kyle Kelly is my deputy communications commission, chair in person, went out there. And Kyle also has a background. He's a part-time telecommunicator for Northwest Public Safety, so he has cardinal knowledge of the system. They were very pleased. So we started a process and without further ado, Detective Matusovich is our subject matter expert to bring to you folks and talk with you.
I'm just, I'm here at the request of OEM Director Amy. All questions that have to do with the operations of the police department, I'd ask you to forward to Chief Zakowski, okay? I'm mainly here just to explain to you the whole background of how this has come up. We have been with a specific company called Hunt that we've been on approximately for 20 years. We have severely outgrown it. There's questions of whether the company may sunset down the road. Basically, we're trying to get out in front of this now and be proactive. It's very limited right now, what we can and can't do within the police department. There's a lot of manual, hands-on type stuff that happens in the back office that this system can approve on. One of them being paperless, digital signatures, gives the management over to PD some background to be able to use the dashboard functions, gives them real-time stats. Not only is it to do that, but it encompasses a lot of mobile functions that we currently don't have. Integrates very much with the state systems. The state is pushing the criminal information justice sharing system and this will complement that. What basically it'll do is, is it's starting to capture offender data. So on an investigative standpoint, we could then go to, say, Sony's databases of offenders, for example. And we, without having to call them, are able to search for that information on the fly. For example, we go off for an investigation, middle of the night. Obviously, their detective division doesn't work after four o'clock unless they're on overtime, just like we do. And we will then, you know, have access to that information. So that, that's just a small microcosm as far as what that does. But we've taken it one step further. Being in an IT area for 20-plus years, we always try to scale out three to five years on something. Five years out from now, emergency management's going to look much different. The trend is obviously consolidation at the state level, regionalization and so forth. Not that we're proactively advocate for that, but we definitely have the ability to, give an example. CMed, who is the central dispatching system that takes care of fire and ambulance. A few years back, New Haven, for example, was the main dispatch area and then has since closed. If by chance the same type of situation happens, Seymour then can step up and take care of all the functionality as far as ambulance dispatch, fire dispatch, and start exporting those statistics that they need into their systems that they use. So we do not have that ability right now. We can't dispatch, we can't keep track of stuff, but it's the back office side that's really a problem for us. You know, going the paperless route, the courts right now are a little behind. They're trying to go paperless. That's going to be another component down the road that we're going to be integrating with. So, you know, if I was to bring the records lady here, she would probably give you a lot more detail on how sometimes reports either get lost in the shuffle, take a little time. A lot of people touch those reports for approval. It all cleans up that mess. So what it also is going to do on the IT side is, right now, there's currently five or six servers that we have just to perform this task. I'm probably going to be able to get onto two now. And we've been working with Rob. We're looking for a little bit, again, on a townwide basis, some solutions that will consolidate and make those avenues easier in a backup sense. It just makes sense for us to do this. Just to give you our advice, we've met with probably three other vendors, Tom? So what we did was is looking for all these vendors, because I know this probably wouldn't be one of your questions, who else we saw. We met with a company called Circle Square. Unfortunately, there's a big consolidation happening within the dispatch world and records management. Motorola offers a package, Circle Square offers a package, I mean Central Square, I'm sorry. But they're not in the area here and, you know, it's like we don't want to be the odd man out either. So we're trying to stay on the statewide level of what systems that they have for integration, so. Again, if you have any questions, I can elaborate a little farther. I think that's going to be a good overview.
Questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Good job. Alright, so in front of you, you all have your resolution, which we'll read into the record. Whereas Next Gen Solutions LLC desires to enter into a certain agreement with the town of Seymour. And whereas pursuant to the agreement, Next Gen agrees to sell and the town agrees to buy certain hardware, software and services, now therefore be resolved. The town is hereby authorized to enter into a master purchase agreement with Next Gen and the W. Kurt Miller First Selectman is authorized to execute any and all documents, including the agreement to effectuate this transaction. Provided however, the document must be informed and content approved by town council. I have a motion. Motion by Bob, second by Trish, under discussion. Mr. Paterno.
Next Gen is a product that is widely known in the public safety communities throughout the state of Connecticut. We took a look at the contract, made a number of suggested changes. We haven't heard back from anyone, so I would ask whoever is the principal contact to have somebody get back to us from Next Gen so we can go over it. The contract that we actually have, we did a bunch of redlining and there are some blank addendums attached, if you will. So it's going to take some work to pull it together unless they accept all the changes we made. And we didn't make, you know, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, but we do want to get it in satisfactory form and context to reflect what the, what the deal is. So we drew up this resolution knowing that we don't have a final document, so we don't hold it up. So if, if my friends over here can get Next Gen to respond quickly, we can actually get this done before the end of the year.
Okay, so everybody understands? Alright, so Rich will then give me the sign-off. It's okay to sign and then I'll sign, assuming that's what this board is. So any comments on the resolution? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, staying. Chair outside, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, item number nine, reimbursement of Remen Street project. In your package, you have a letter, excuse me, from NAFIS and Young Consulting Engineers. They are the engineer for the Remen Street project. It says, "Dear Mr. Miller, this letter is written as clarification surrounding the damage to the sanitary lateral at the above reference address, which is 28 Remen Street. The sanitary sewer lateral at this address is about two feet deep near the curb line. The town's contractor was required to perform grading behind the curb as part of the road construction. The subject lateral was damaged by the contractor during the grading process. Attached is an invoice from SCS Drain Cleaning Services LLC in the amount of $400. Please note that the invoice is marked as paid in full. Therefore..." Therefore, NYE, which is NAFIS and Young Engineers, recommends payment in the amount of $400 to Mr. Ed Kuja. If you have any questions, please contact me and Jim gives his number. So this is a part of the project. This would be something that would be paid out of legal and claims. You know, technically, we could fight this process, but I can assure you we're gonna spend a lot more than $400. Seeing as though we are struggling getting the state of Connecticut to pay us back almost the million dollars that they currently owe us on this project. So it is the recommendation of Jim and concurred by myself that the town pay the $400 to address the concern that the resident had. And then we can try to address this with the state of Connecticut as we move forward. So entertain a motion to approve the payment of $400 to Mr. Ed Kuja of 29 Remen Street as recommended by Jim Galligan of NAFIS and Young. So moved. Motion, I don't know who made that? Well, Chris, second by Bob, discussion. So what questions, concerns, issues does anybody have?
So this guy, this homeowner paid that amount out of his own pocket to have it cleaned after it was damaged?
Yes.
And now he's asked for reimbursement?
Correct.
So rather go for contractor, we're just gonna pay it and then see what happens down the road?
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
And we're making the resident hole and then we'll work to...
Remember section.
Yeah.
Yep. How would you keep this bill going so we can better move through how does that work?
This will just be wrapped in with the rest of the bills that we have? I mean, there's no guarantee we're gonna get paid on this.
But you're gonna still keep it open to try?
We're gonna try, yes.
Yeah, we definitely spend more than that.
Yep. I mean, I would not hold out hope that we get paid.
No.
I would fall out of my chair if we did. But we're at least gonna try to see if it's something that's possible, but...
And the homeowner, nothing wrong, so we wanna make sure you...
Right.
I believe the last name is pronounced Kudae.
Kudae, okay.
Kudae.
So Lee, could you make sure that's reflected in the record, that Al feels the last name of the resident is Kudae?
I know Kudae, yes.
Maybe put one of those little accent things over the...
Kirk butchered it, try to clarify it.
That's a rough crowd. Are there any other comments that are appropriate?
No way inappropriate.
No, me.
There's always eight in the head, bud.
No, you're making a comment about me, I'm saying. The comment about me isn't appropriate. I deem it that way. I watched a lot of Congress the last week. I rule you out of order, Mr. Bruno.
The recital is the fine gentleman from...
Yeah, the fine gentleman from... From the county court. Any other comments, thoughts? Nope. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying? Chair outside, motion passes seven to zero. So Lee, if you can make a note to make sure that we, make sure that Mr. Ed Kudae of 28 Remen Street receives his check for $400. Thank you very much. Okay, item number 10. Reimbursement for the Thomas pothole claim. All right, in your package, you have a letter from Robert Thomas of 33 Hickory Lane. It says, To whom it may concern, on Tuesday, April 30, I hit a pothole on Cogwheel Drive. The impact blew the left front tire and knocked it out of alignment. A picture of the pothole was taken May 6th, but had been fixed by then. I am asking for reimbursement of the tire, $150.08, and the realignment, $66. Regards, Robert Thomas. So attached, as you can see, is a police report. There are some pictures. This was work that was done, if you remember, Cogwheel, we had from Cogwheel, from 67 to progress completely redone. I think we can all agree Cogwell was in some rough shape. Public Works tried to do some patching. You can see it in this picture. You can definitely see the patches that were there. And then you see the invoice from Town Fair Tire. And then you also see the letter from Trident Insurance declining the claim. So in the past, residents that submit these claims, if they are declined, it comes before this board and we decide whether or not we're going to reimburse the resident. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion that we reimburse Robert Thomas of 33 Hickory Lane in the amount of $150.08 for his tire and $66 for his alignment as requested in his letter dated May 13, 2019.
Can you make a motion for that?
Just so we can discuss it.
Oh, motion.
Motion by Rob, second by Bob, under discussion, go ahead.
What was I gonna say? So I did notice when I read the letter from the insurance company, they're saying that there's no rec, that it's something that would be reimbursed if the town had knowledge of it. Notice. So how is that cataloged? How is that described? Because pure knowledge that the road had to be worked on as well as we do? Or is it more, once somebody had been hit and it had gone to, is there a certain ticket system that we have of when incidents happen that would spur something?
If we made aware of a pothole that causes damage, we have a certain amount of time to get that fixed.
So it's not sort of causes damage, causes an incident, just knowledge of, what I would be afraid of is just knowledge that road needs repair.
That doesn't count. Rich can jump in, 'cause if that was the case, I think, you know...
That was my fear.
Every DNF road in Seymour, we'd be on notice for already.
Exactly. That's what I wanna make sure of. It's once an event happens, then that becomes a priority.
Correct.
If it's not addressed, okay, now I'm...
And I mean, you can even see in Mr. Thomas's letter, you know, he went back on May 6th, you know, less than a week later, and the potholes were already taken care of. So, you know, once it was made aware to us, Public Works reacted immediately and took care of the issue.
Do you have any idea why it was seven months later that we're hearing this?
You know, these things just kind of, these things just kind of drag through the process sometimes. Some residents aren't aware that they can get paid, that they can put a claim in. As you can see, the letter from Trident was the end of July, so...
They never say misplaced it or never received it, the letter?
The letter from the resident? The letter from the insurance company. The resident misplaced the letter.
There we go.
Or didn't get it, okay.
How much risk does one assume driving our roads? I mean, it seems, this seems a weird thing for government to reimburse.
Not uncommon.
Yeah, we do it all, we do it all the time. We probably do four or five a year, maybe.
You do it all the time, but we don't have to do it.
We don't have to.
There's 13A 149, defective highway statute. You have no notice of it, you don't need to pay. It's always been my, I'm sticking to that. I've always voted no on these and I'll continue to do it, so.
There you go.
My concern just becomes, once we approve one and more come forward, that then you start setting a precedence to do them.
Exactly.
I do think it's kind of a slippery slope as well, you know, if...
We are not the, we are not the Stuff Happens Department, I guess is my concern with this. And while I guess I understand the precedent in accepting these, I worry about that slippery slope that Selectmandaka noticed, noted. There has to be a high threshold of liability on the town's part. And even the insurance adjuster noted that there is no liability to the town of Seymour.
There is no, you're absolutely right. There is no liability in the town of Seymour. And we have done this. My concern is that this happened on April 30th and he contacted the police department on May 21st.
I would, I would say it's because he didn't know any better and he's trying to like correct. I can, I actually trust the guy. It's not like a whole lot of money might, but I saw the same thing, Emery, and I agree. That is, it's a concern. I just think it was an honest kind of trying to fix it after the fact, not knowing.
Yeah, he's a young man, it looks like, and doesn't understand what he can and can't do.
Right, and it's something that we have, we have set precedent in the past that we have, we have paid these things. We have set the precedent, you know? It is on a, you know, on a case, that we look at the case and we do it. We don't approve all of them, we approve some of them, but it's just something that this board has always done. And to Attorney Bruno's comment, we don't have to. We just do it for our residents.
Now, and again, I wanna go back, do we have, is there a particular system or record if somebody had been damaged, let's say, two days prior to that, on that particular pothole?
So if there's a...
Database?
If there's a pothole, they call town hall. They used to call Public Works, but now all the phone calls, the Public Works come into town hall. Town hall marks the pothole down, they write it down, and they call Public Works and Public Works goes out and they fix the pothole.
Yeah, so they...
So it is all documented.
Add a record of it.
Did we have record of that as a particular call? That's kind of where I think the next question would be.
Probably, I don't know, that would...
From, for the insurance.
From his call, I'm gonna go with no. I think it was just work that we realized it was a pothole and we went out and fixed it. But I can't say with 100% certainty. Simply because he reported it after it was already repaired.
Right.
So I'm just gonna assume that that was Public Works being...
Do we have standards from which what we're looking at, we will pay and won't? 'Cause if we don't, I do think we need to discuss that, maybe not tonight, but...
This is exactly why we shouldn't pay him, though, because now you're getting...
Understand.
Splitting hairs and you're gonna give somebody reimbursement, you're not gonna give somebody reimbursement. People get annoyed, people get angry. That's why the statute is there protecting municipalities. We shouldn't be paying on these. We don't have notice of it.
It opens up a lot of questions.
I feel badly that it happened. I mean, it could happen to me, too, right? But it's not the town's responsibility to reimburse for these unless they know.
Well, I think that's the standard.
If there was a record that there was a pothole and then it happened after, then that would be...
And somebody dropped the ball.
First person would pay for it.
And Public Works, then that's a different story. That's a different set of facts.
Exactly. First person, that sucks. Second person, we should have rectified that right after the first person, so...
I can go with that.
And with the time that has passed, just to get the work done. I mean, five days, four days passed before you got the work done on a blown tire. Mr. Paterno.
I hate to wait in on this particular issue, but I just wanted to, because you've been talking about actual notice, yes, that's one component. The second prong of that, if you will, is, or ought to have known, the exercise of reasonable due care. Okay, so that's something a little bit different than actual notice.
Simplify that.
Well...
You and your legalese.
And the adjuster said it in her letter. She wrote pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 13A 149, a municipality cannot be held liable for damages sustained as a result of a defect in a public way unless they had prior notice that the defective condition existed for a sufficient length of time or was of such a dangerous character that the municipality by exercise of reasonable care could have discovered and remedied it. And so you're going to, it's not always, I just wanna throw this little element in, it's not always gonna be actual notice under 13A 149. So a lot of Public Works departments have their pothole logs and it sounds like we have a version of that. But you're also, can't turn like a blind eye, you know, if there's an enormous hole down the street from the Public Works garage and every morning all the trucks go by it and then along comes, you know, Mrs. Smith and she hits it and no one has called. You're gonna have difficulty defending that.
I also saw something in here about a turkey.
I did see, I actually read that, too, now that you mention it. I did see the thing.
So...
It sounds like the turkey caused him to change his path on the road and he hit the pothole.
So he saw the foul situation.
Oh, that's funny.
All right, we grab that back, microphone back. Swerved and that's why he hit the pothole, so it wasn't unavoidable. I'm sure the bird is thankful. With us knowing that there was an issue with the road, that the work needed to be done, that the work was scheduled.
That would change the game, wouldn't it?
That might.
Right.
That might change it, yeah, sure.
Because the only reason we didn't do it faster was we were organizing the money to do that road.
There you go.
So we sent Public Works there to fix those potholes and now this is starting to come back.
Uh-huh.
Is that...
Sure.
Open us up to that?
Well, you had actual, you had actual notice. It was, you know, it was with reasonable, yeah. And you had sufficient time to fix it. And it was just a funding issue. So when I think of those things, I sort of tip in favor of paying 304... How big a claim is this?
$198.
A $198 claim.
210, 60. I mean, I can make the argument that Trident actually should pay that.
Sure.
I understand there is a precedent.
Except, excuse me, one sec.
I'm sorry.
Except, there's always a cost benefit analysis as to how far you wanna take a claim under $200.
Agreed.
You understand what I'm...
No, agreed. I understand that there's a precedent to this. However, I don't think that we should be bound to the past in this case. I mean, personally speaking, this is my first vote on this matter. And we open up more questions than we answer when we start picking and choosing these kind of reimbursements unless there's a very high standard of accountability to the town, very high standard. I mean, Mr. Bruno mentioned the specific statute. We, it is not the job of government to be picking and choosing who gets our money, I feel.
I think Rich has also pointed out that second prong, which is also important, which is gray and there's a lot of case law. And it sounds like in this situation, we can apply it and use it common sense. But in general, I am not for reimbursing these things. And this is a typical insurance company letter, denial letter, 'cause they never want to pay anything.
Right.
So, yeah, we should take another swipe at them and see if they can reimburse us for reimbursing...
We also, we also need to consider, I mean, when, what is Mr. Thomas's maintenance record on this car? Did he need the realignment beforehand? There's a lot of questions that don't, that go into account before we discuss our accountability for this one pothole. There's an assumed risk when you drive on the road that you might hit something, whether it's a pothole, whether it's a car, et cetera. I think we need to consider that before we give taxpayer money away. All right, let's take a straight-up-and-down vote.
Kurt, can I just ask, or make one more comment, ask one question? Since we're working, we have a road plan now, that's not going to, just having a road plan and seeing these roads are supposed to be paved is not going to create that notice prior that we know the road needs to be paved. That's really, as you were talking, the only idea that came to mind.
Might as well just leave that on the table, Rich.
Sorry.
Well, it's one of those, I'm not gonna answer that in a hypothetical blanket fashion, but let's just say the more notice you have, the more responsible you are, in general. So like if you had a situation where three different neighbors call about a pothole on a street or call about rough road conditions and say, for example, there's a decision made that, well, we're not gonna do anything on a temporary basis because at the end of the month, we're going to, we're going to do the road over or do some form of reconstruction, 'cause it's on our list. And then in the meantime, somebody hits a pothole or a motorcyclist gets hurt, for example. You're gonna, you know, be dealing with gray areas of contested liability, but you...
Ultimately, a road plan, knowing that we're paving it 'cause we recognize it needs to be done now, could create that gray area.
It could turn the gray of the road, right?
Yeah, yeah. But it creates, all of these things, the more notice you have, the more responsible you are, generally. But you have, 13A 149 is a powerful statute, powerful statute. For example, 13A 149 is also a sole proximate cause statute. What that means is the road defect must be the sole proximate cause of someone getting injured. So you, for say a hypothetical thing, three neighbors have called, the road is in terrible condition, it's on your list. Public Works doesn't do anything to fix it because they know in four weeks it's gonna be reconstructed. Along comes the motorcyclist, he's driving down the road and he sees a, he sees, somebody calls to him from the side of the road, so he turns his head and instead of avoiding the pothole, drives right into it. Well, guess what? 13A 149 says that the defect has to be the sole proximate cause. So in that situation, it's a very powerful statute in favor of municipalities. So in that situation, the municipality, even though it had all the notice in the world, even though it didn't go out and fix it, is not liable because it's not the sole... go out and fix it, is not liable because it's not the sole cause. It was, the driver should have been paying attention to the road conditions ahead of him, and instead, he turned to look at the person, you know, calling to him in the yard while he continued forward.
Or the turkeys.
Or the turkeys, but I, I don't know about that because the turkeys may have been in the roadbed, and he saw the turkeys and he had to avoid the turkeys, so I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue about it, too, I'm not gonna, yeah, but anyway, that's like a law school exam involving thirteen A one forty-nine I gave you, but it's also a, you know, back powder.
I'm not concerned about the dollar amount of resondancy, it's more the precedent this time, you know, going forward, that's all.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you. Hate the law.
I mean, when you blow a tire like that, don't they automatically realign your car?
Yeah, well, automatically aligning products and tires on a car nowadays.
All right, so let's, a vote. All right, all in favor of paying the full amount, please signify by saying aye. All those against paying the full amount, nay.
Nay.
I don't know who said what, so let's go down the line, Chris.
Nay.
All right, I vote yes, so the motion fails, and just note my yes vote, okay, we'll let Mr. Thomas know. Okie dokie, moving on to item number eleven, appointments, we have two appointments before us, shall entertain a motion to approve the appointments dated December eighteen, two thousand nineteen. By Al, second by Chris, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed, abstained, cheer about time, motion passes six zero, no, we never do, I assume the two of them are sitting here for a reason. All right, item number twelve, tax refunds and abatements. Maybe? You got ten dollars? I'll tell you right now. Give it to Tom, he's the bag man. Intend a motion to approve the tax collector's report dated twelve thirteen, two thousand nineteen, as presented by Susan Bowen in our tax office. Motion by Al, second by Anne Marie, under discussion, just make sure there's no conflicts. Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, cheer about time, motion passes seven zero, Clay, I just got you broken in, so I'm not gonna let you go anywhere. Come on, item number thirteen, transfers, we have no transfers before us, item fourteen, correspondence, we have a letter from the Citizens Engine Company recommending Clay Jurgens and Stephen Childs to the position, the open position of the Board of Fire Commissioners, and then we have the check registers, also, which is not in your packets, but I'm going to just share this with you, when we have major storms, we track all of the expenses that go along with that, so Tom and some of the other service chiefs compile that in, gather that information, Tom ends up compiling it and submitting it, and then we submit our expenses to FEMA for reimbursement. So to date, FEMA has reimbursed us about a hundred and ninety thousand or so for, was it the last hurricane that we had?
Tornado.
Tornado, tornado, excuse me, that little microburst, the thing that lasted about like four minutes or whatever it was. So, and what we have done in the past is, we pay for these things as they go on, so they are current expenses, we pay for them in the current budget, so we're not carrying any liabilities for them. If we do get money back from FEMA, we generally do two things, one is, we buy equipment that's needed by, by the departments, and then we also put money in reserve, so that way, when these events happen, we do have cash put aside. So, at the present time, I gave the service chiefs eighty thousand dollars of the hundred and ninety to spend, with the understanding that any additional money that comes in, and they're projecting another twenty, possibly, would go toward equipment as well. So I asked them to all get together, I have a letter signed by the Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, the Director of Public Works, and our Emergency Management Director, as to how the eighty thousand dollars would be broken up, this is the same formula that we followed in the past, Public Works will receive twenty-five thousand towards the purchase of numerous support items, the Fire Department will receive fifteen thousand dollars towards the purchase of a used SCBA compressor, the Town Custodians will receive thirty-five thousand towards the purchase of a new pickup with a plow, and the Police Department will receive five thousand dollars to use towards the purchase of an ATV. This is more informational to this board. There's no action that this board needs to take, so that's why I'm giving it to your, sharing with you as correspondence, I just received this letter the other day and didn't have time to get it into packets, so I just wanted to at least share this with you so you have an understanding of what's going on, some of this equipment, we're gonna go out and try to get right away, so I wanted to let everyone know just what was going on in case someone were to ask you a question. The equipment for, obviously for Public Works, because that was numerous support items, they're gonna purchase a Honda portable generator, chainsaws, pole saws, air brake hose fittings, adapters, hydraulic hoses, fittings, and crimps, SureTrak, seven by sixteen landscape trailer, and safety jackets for the staff. So, again, again, this is just more informational for the board, I just wanted to let you know again in case someone comes up and asks you what's going on, you guys aren't in the dark with that. Okay, so that closes correspondence, item fifteen, public comments, any public comments? Any public comments? Hearing no public comment, move on to item number sixteen, selectmen's public comments, Mr. Bowen.
First off, sincere thank you to the Backlick family for all that they've done for the toy charities that they've done for the past few years, it's wonderful events that they've run, both at Retro, I believe it was, and recently at their house at the Yankee Clipper, also, I just want to wish everybody with the holiday coming up, Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, whatever you celebrate, be safe, and we'll see you again next month.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Van Hagen.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
That kind of comment. Mr. Bruno.
Yeah, same here, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and see you in January.
Al says ditto.
Not Anne Marie.
Anne Marie's, yeah, hold on, let me get your name and your box ready, go ahead.
Are you ready?
I'm ready, bye.
Okay, so we all know how I was talking about the twenty, twenty-two, for twenty-two Walk for Hope, right, we're gonna have our first meeting on January ninth, twenty twenty, so I am hoping to have talked to, we have somebody from Public Works, Tom Amy's gonna be there, we have Chris Edwards, I'd like to have some department chairs there, and who'd ever like to be on the committee at that meeting, it's meeting at seven o'clock, Rory, hope you can meet the plan around.
Clarity?
Clarity. January ninth to Thursday, seven o'clock.
Nothing, keep going.
Okay, also, they are doing a twenty-two for twenty-two masquerade gala.
Yep.
On March twentieth, twenty twenty, it's gonna be held at Aria, and I'm hoping that Seymour is going to be well represented, we can get a couple of tables, it is a hundred dollars a ticket, it is a gala, it's a masquerade ball, black and tie, gowns, and there's gonna be silent auctions there, all the money for this goes towards the veterans for suicide, it goes towards the families, and it goes towards them. Also, I didn't know if anybody knew, but the post office is selling black and white calendars of the town of Seymour, they're all historic photos, they're kind of cool, one of the things that Department of Public Works, as well as our first responders for getting out there during this horrific ice storm that we had.
Yeah, good times.
That was good times.
Good times.
Can't wait to see that budget, and as well as, last but not least, thank the Backlick family for all they have done for the toys for kids, as well as the, for the town of Seymour, everybody she's out and supported their foundations, and I want to lift everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Okay.
Sorry?
No, you went, you went speedy there. Bob?
The town of Seymour, great holidays season, is it?
Bob says ditto.
Mrs. Danka.
I just want to thank the Land Trust for hosting Santa again this year, and starting, well, it was a little bit of a late start, but the Christmas season with the kids, it's, I always have just a fantastic time watching them, and the fireworks show, I think, was amazing. Don't think, so, and Happy Holidays to everyone, look forward to working with you all, seeing everyone in twenty twenty.
Yeah, just to build off the, the fireworks, Alex called in a bit of a panic because they loaded the wrong fireworks into the tubes to bring to us, but the show went off, if you did not know, you would not have realized that that was not the show we were supposed to get, it was excellent, Alex was able to get a free show for us over the summer, so we'll get the same show, so we actually got two shows for the price of one. So we're gonna do that, Alex and I are, yeah, that's edible. So credit to Alex for, for doing that, so we're gonna have a show in June or July, we're gonna base it around something, you know, the parade committee's getting creative, you know, they're talking about potentially night parades, different things like that, trying to really encompass, we have a nice first Saturday as well in December, Santa gets off the train, you know, all the kids are there, if you, I'm sure you saw the pictures and the video, we get a couple hundred people, which is really nice, actually have to block off Main Street, so we're trying to encompass doing it all maybe in one shot, where we would have the Christmas parade, Santa gets off the train, we light the tree downtown, and then we bring every, all the kids over, they're thinking, maybe I can hay, like a hay ride over to the Land Trust for fireworks, so we're trying to encompass a whole. Make kind of like a little winter Wonderland event out of it, so credit to the parade committee for coming up with this stuff, so, you know, so good things are, are going on, and credit to them, credit to Culture and Arts for the work they do, the two groups are gonna work together, which is, which is great to get that done, so.
I have one more comment, that I didn't think of until right now.
Fire away.
I'm sorry.
Fire away.
Just a note for the selectmen's office for town hall, speaking with some residents where I live off of Pearl Street, some of those back roads, I did not notice, but learned many of them are, have parking on either side of the road during the winter, that's not being followed each winter, and when we were, we were talking about the ice storm, I know we're supposed to have a really bad winter, so I just want, I just want to mention, like, I think we do need to have some.
Do we have specifics on streets?
Third Street, First Street, Second, all the ones off of Grand Street, I guess are supposed to be.
Correct, you make it know, we'll let the chief know. Yep.
Just have a bit better monitoring, because some of the residents are really concerned they're gonna slide into a car that's not.
That's not a problem, we'll pass that on to the chief and have them beef up patrols a little bit. Okay, so just to add, today was day one of our annual financial summit, we met with several of the town's larger vendors to kind of go through, you know, a summary of what's happened over the last twelve months, and then what they're predicting for fiscal year twenty-one, as you know, we've, I've already started the budget process, tomorrow, we'll be spending the morning with our health insurance consultants, obviously, that's the biggest ticket, our loss ratios have not been good, they're projecting an increase of over twenty percent to our health insurance, which is a lot of money, so we're gonna kind of go through that process, shopping it out, once we're done with them, we have what's known as the Hunger Games, that is where all the department heads come and present their budgets with the larger departments, but they present them, they present them to each other, so that way, if the Community Service Department is cut because we have to give more money to Public Works, the department heads understand why, so they go back and forth, and they talk about their goals and everything else, and then we go through a process where we actually finalize all of the capital, so we've, it's worked the last two years where we've included all of them in this process, so they have a better understanding of what's going on, so that's day two tomorrow, I just want to publicly thank our host, Larry Janeski, Larry offers the Basement Systems Training Building, I think it's Contractor Nation now, so, and takes care of everything for us, which is, which is great, so I just want to say thank you to, to him for allowing us, this is the second year that we've, we've been up there, so he's a very gracious, gracious host, so. So with that, Rory, anything we've missed? Mr. Beterla, anything you'd like to add? No other legal lessons you'd like to? So, all right, with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Trish, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, mark the meeting close, eight twenty-six.